To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening. Jason and Frank are zooming in today, and I'd like to ask if there is a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
There are second.
I'd second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we are now going to administer the oath of office for two of our three new student board representatives, Alexander and Kami. I'd ask you to join me out front. How about right here? Okay, you're gonna raise your right hand. And you'll say your own name, okay? I.
I. I'll go to voting.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington.
To support the Constitution.
For the United States and the state of Washington. And will faithfully perform.
And will faithfully perform.
The duties of school board director.
The duties of school board director.
Student representative.
Student representative.
Of the Prosser School District.
Of the Prosser School District.
Number one one six.
Number one one six.
In the county of Benton.
In the county of Benton.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
According to the best in my ability.
According to the best in my ability.
Very good. I will ask you to come over here and sign.
So, let's see, I'll sit here.
Our signature or just?
Yep, no signature.
We are now going to acknowledge and applaud our Prosser School District retirees and appreciate them.
Wow, so we have some here tonight. Um, so, um, what we like to do is, um, each one of them, for those of you who are watching or whatever, get a plaque. And it talks about their years of service. And so to honor everybody, I'm going to do those. So, this is presented to Jennifer Kloss for eighteen years of service, right? We have one for Sandra Haddow for thirty years of service. Quite a big deal. Joe Bressberg for twenty-one years of service. Trying to see if any of them were online, so that's it. Uh, for Terry Beal for eight years of service. For Valerie Baker. And ladies and gentlemen, I don't know if you can grasp this or not, forty years of service. It's amazing to me. Ruth Zedeker for eighteen years of service. Kayanne Wattups for thirty years of service. Lori Riggs for thirty-one. And Rayla Dzema for thirteen. We do want to thank everybody for their years of service. We will make sure they get their plaques. Um, one thing about doing this the week after graduation, I think many, or, you know, week after school gets out, I think everybody's kind of like, I'm out. So, thank you very much for allowing us to honor them. Um, we also have cookies and water and so forth. Please help yourself. Um, uh, let's take just a minute. You want to grab a bottle of water or cookie or something? Um, Selena will open them up for us and we'll go from there. I'm gonna go get a cookie.
I'm gonna get a cookie. How about you?
Okay, Frank and Jason and anybody else out there, we're gonna enjoy these cookies while you're gone.
Yeah, go ahead.
Item number D, we have two information items. First being PSD Administration Office moved to OPHS June twentieth.
And I just took about a cookie. Let me follow. Um, we just want to make sure the public and everybody knows that we're officially moving to the Old Prosser High School. So fifteen hundred Grant Avenue. Approximately the twentieth or twenty-first will be closed down, and we will be at the Old Prosser High School. Um, you'll see quite a bit going on. And when I talk about it in my report, I say we're not having anyone over for dinner until about the fifteenth of July. And what I mean by that is there's gonna be lots of boxes and moving whatever, but our fair first official day where our phones will be in, and that's where we'll be receiving guests will be the twentieth. Um, so if anybody's listening, we want to make sure you understand and give us a little grace those first couple of weeks while we put boxes and stuff away. Um, we're working on our address change. That'll go out on our website, a notification out through social media and so forth. But we just want to let you know, technically, June twentieth will be our first day there, even though I know it's gonna look like a train wreck.
Number two, summer hours for the administration office.
Um, so the PDF is attached to your documents. We, um, are committed to certain hours. We try and allow our office staff. It is a smaller staff because we rotates, um, summer vacations for them and so forth, but we are committed to an eight to four schedule.
Protocol for addressing the board. Do we have visitors signed in?
We do.
And then anybody online as well? We need to read the protocol for addressing the board. You may present a concern to the board during the time reserved for hearing public. If this is the case, we ask that you, prior to the start of the meeting, sign in noting the topic you intend to address to the board. Come to the microphone and state your name. Do not reflect adversely on the political or economic, ethnic background, character, or motives of any entity. Do keep your comments concise, non-emotional, and brief. The board is interested in hearing your concerns and your compliments too. It's best to call the board a couple of days before the meeting. If this isn't possible, you can ask the board president to recommend you during the hearing section. We have Noah Dempsey listed.
Weird having to write my name down to speak now. Okay, um, I actually wrote it down because usually I speak off the fly, but I wanted to get everything down. Um, good evening. I wanted to share a little message and, um, share some dialogue with the board. Um, as many of you know, I graduated, um, this past weekend, and while I was walking across the stage to receive my diploma, um, well, my diploma cover, which is a symbolic image to show how much I have grown as a person, I was told by Board President Jason Rayner, who's not here at the moment, that I needed to, and I quote, "grow up sometime," in response to my polite refusal to shake hands with Mr. Rayner and Mr. Wyman. This statement hit me as a little bit of a surprise, but I expected nothing less from a man who clearly has not grown up himself. To find the need to make this comment after I took a personal choice to not shake hands on moral grounds. I chose not to shake either board member's hands, as my convictions and morals would not allow me to show alignment with individuals directly opposed to my values. Individuals who weaponize race, religion, and sexuality, among others, have no.
I don't want to interrupt you. You have your three minutes, but I want to remind you of the policy thing. You can discuss, but you can't make comments regarding people.
Okay.
You can definitely reflect and then that out.
Okay, that, that was it talking about.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, okay. Um, these people have no place in my heart, mind, and especially not in my hand. To conform to this social norm would have been a direct rejection of my morals, and therefore I chose not to shake. And I make this, yeah. Sorry. I have grown up. Growing up is knowing that you have free will. Growing up is not conforming with social norms. Growing up is knowing that you can deny someone while still being respectful. It is not making sly comments under your breath. Growing, uh, growing up is wanting to accept people, not subjugate them. Growing up is sticking to what you believe in and holding true to your promises. So in conclusion, I believe I have, in fact, grown up. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that signed in? Okay. On student representative report.
Okay, um, I'm covering athletics. So, what's going on with December ball and what's going on? So football is doing their yearly boys' camp, the tenth to thirteenth, I believe, and have been doing their seven-on-seven tournaments, getting ready for the season. Girl soccer has been practicing on the normal, and we begin our games at the end of the month. Volleyball is doing their Monday league and is regularly practicing, and boys and girl basketball has put on a basketball camp for K through eighth grade, and around a hundred and ten kids have shown up. That's all I have for you today.
I do not.
Okay, thank you, and good job so far in your first meeting. Okay, we have quite a few action items, and the first one is Go Fan Digital Ticket Sales Agreement.
Yes.
You're gonna sit up here for a while, I think. No, I'm teasing you.
Good evening, everybody.
So first item talking about is Go Fan Digital Ticketing. Um, the reason for wanting to switch from what we're currently using, which is hometown ticketing, to Go Fan is to align not only with what our C WAC league is doing. Every single team within our league is Go Fan ticketing, but also to align with the WIAA, which is all postseason events is ran through Go Fan. So my light bulb went on and was thinking, what's the best way to help our fans have an easy transition between app to app? And I thought there was a bridge in the whole system when us, when we were using hometown ticketing, when Go Fan's the main application to use for online ticketing. So my request is that we switch over from hometown ticketing to Go Fan ticketing to not only align with what the C WAC league is doing, but also to align with what the state is doing.
Is there a cost or variance in that? Is the percentage, it's the same, is it not?
The percentage is the same.
Yeah. So in the contract, a dollar per ticket, you buy it online. If you go get seasons pass, I think it's five dollars per ticket.
Correct.
That goes on to the purchaser.
Goes on to the purchaser, but we will still be selling in-person tickets as well. So we'll have the option of getting online ticketing and also in-person ticketing. So those that don't want to pay the fee, they still have the traditional way of paying, uh, with cash.
And this includes some hardware, is that right?
So when we do sign up, they give us all the hardware.
Tell me how that works.
So the hardware is, they're gonna give us an iPad that has LTE on it, which is internet on it. Um, so it allows us to scan the tickets right there. Well, it's not necessarily scanning, it's touching the, touching the screen, which allows the ticket to be marked as a bought ticket. And you can do it from a iPad that they give us, but we also have another phone that we use for athletics that I can download the app as well and use that. So we have, we can hit two different entry points, our top gate, at the stadium with the top gate and the bottom gate, and then also in our facility here at the high school, we have our bottom gate and top gate that we use for basketball as well.
You have to have the app, or can you go on, go online at a home computer and print out a ticket?
Yeah.
Can you scan?
Correct.
And what's the turnaround for getting the money back to the school district? It's, I think it's immediate, isn't it?
It's immediately.
Yeah, so it gets deposited directly into, um, no delay.
It's probably, in all sincerity, probably faster than our cash system.
Jason or Frank, do you guys, or Michelle, do you guys have any questions? All my questions. Kami, Alex.
I do not have a question. I'm just, I think it makes sense to me.
Well, is there a motion to approve? Go Fan.
Go move.
A second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Motion carried. Yes, and also BSN Sports Reward Program.
So I did this at my last place of employment, which is signing a Nike, uh, rewards all-school deal. Um, it's not necessarily a contract that's gonna bind us for the July first, two thousand twenty-four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine. If we don't like what the reward, the rewards are giving us, we can end our agreement with them. I reached out to Granville School District, uh, Ellenbrook School District, and those athletic programs also have Nike all-school deals. Um, the reason behind this is we can get a lot more equipment at a discounted price. Uh, once we meet that threshold of buying a certain amount of equipment for the year through BSN, we can have, uh, rebated discount prices, so we can get bleachers for stadiums that might need them. We can get extra equipment, um, kind of the world's our oyster per se, depending on how much our programs do spend per year. I reached out to all head coaches, got their opinion to see if they wanted to be a Nike school. All of them resounding said yes, which was a pretty easy sell to me. Um, but with buying Nike uniforms or being in a Nike all-school deal, uh, the only programs that have to be outfitted in it are the varsity programs. All the sub-varsity programs, you can buy whatever other uniform you'd like at a much cheaper rate than a Nike would be.
Can you explain the, um, when you approached me about this? One of the things was like your C squad or your something, um, a summer program, all those different kinds of things, and that was a concern I had. I wanted to make sure that it wasn't school-wide, I mean, because that would be quite expensive.
Yeah, it's just for the high school.
And then the only thing, the other piece that we did was the, um, if you read to end the agreement, there's just an, a, an letter that says to end the agreement. That there's no terminate, there's no financial clause in the termination.
Says the duration of this agreement is five years.
Right.
Life first.
But we, if we want to end, exit the agreement, we can exit it with just a letter.
Yeah, it's not a binding contract. It's just an agreement, and that's exactly what they told me last year.
You can help us with that.
Um, my only concern, so, would be that it's, it's a new program to us, and it is five years, and it's like a contract, it's a contract. Um, I would, you know, that's what they truly intend. They would hopefully be amenable to putting language in, you know, thirty days notice, have it for sixty days. So we're not bound by that. How much money do we usually spend per year on items like that?
On uniforms altogether or just, so this involves uniforms, balls, bags, fat packs, everything's included on this rebated deal. My guess is we anywhere from twenty to forty, my guess is, is how much our athletic programs spend on equipment and uniforms and all that other stuff from BSN.
Is that the equipment and uniforms that would fall into this?
Correct.
Or not the lower-level uni-uniforms?
Yeah, so any, so
Can you look?
Just uniforms for the varsity programs. And again, if this is something we don't want to do, it's totally fine. I just think it would be a good opportunity for us to kind of get some bigger items at a discounted price, especially with the amount of money that some programs spend on uniforms and equipment.
Does it change the rotation, uniform rotation at all?
No.
How come cheer, it says specifically that cheerleading is excluded from the total. What's the basis for that?
So cheer per Nike doesn't really go through, like, we use a totally different vendor for our cheer uniforms. It's actually Varsity Academy or something like that, so it's nothing involved with this. Uh, Michelle Hall kind of has her own thing, and that's a lot around, a lot of different high schools. They don't go through BSN for that. They go through varsity.
I believe it also has something to do with, um, now this sounds strange, but if you buy a women's medium-sized short for basketball, it's women's medium-sized short for basketball, where a cheer uniform is length and measured and sized, right? So I don't know that Nike does a lot with cheer, and their product is probably very expensive.
I would look comparable to like a band uniform.
Yes, yes. Yes, exactly. You're saying, exactly correct.
Would we, is there anything that we buy from local businesses that we would not, no longer purchase?
So that, I also reached out to them about that, and they said, for example, when our teams go to state, uh, girls and boys basketball, they buy like t-shirts from a local vendor in town, and they said that's totally fine. So I just wanted to make sure we protected our own people here first before we do anything that's involved with something corporate like this.
Thirty to forty is accurate. Thousand dollars, okay. Frank and Jason, did you have any questions? Alexander, Kami, any questions? Michelle? Jason, if you're trying to speak, we cannot hear you, or Frank.
I don't, I don't think, um, you know, I, I don't, I don't, I guess, I don't like being locked into one, one company like that, but Nike does have quality products. I mean, I mean, I guess the questions that Elisa asked probably answered my questions. So, you know, I, I guess, I guess if we're not damaging our local businesses, you know, and we don't, we, we know the wording in the contract can be such that we can get out of it, I would, I don't think there's any, I have any opposition to it.
I, I will only speak from my, my tenure at past establishments. It was a very, very good deal for other districts. The rewards benefits, um, it's, I see Rick shaking his head also. Many, many districts use it in the rewards benefits. Um, it's, I can compare it to the, being a Pepsi school, and Pepsi buys the signs and puts up the signs. And I think if you read those contracts, we're like in fifty-year agreements or something with Pepsi, you know what I'm saying? But the benefits of those types of partnerships are a good thing, and they are not intentionally trying to hurt small business or small things. I've never ran into, um, when the schools produce their own t-shirts in their student stores or things like that, that's never been a cause for concern.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have, this Jason, I don't have any other questions. I think, uh, Lisa asked all the ones I had, so I appreciate it.
My, my suggestion would be to table it to our next meeting to have that language added, you know, a thirty or sixty-day, you know, out clause that, you know, if things aren't working, we can leave without.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no damages necessarily. We wouldn't have to pay anything to get out of the fiber contract, but I would feel better about it.
Sure.
So a motion? Yes.
So we gotta always, so how do we do that? We need to make the motion to?
At least, did you make a motion to table it? What, what'd you say, Jason?
Uh, I think we need to make a motion to postpone.
That's correct.
And set a table.
Oh, you're, okay, yeah, that is correct. We'll postpone to our next regular board meeting to take action on item. BSN. Okay.
I would second them.
Great. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson.
Thank you.
You're good.
I'm good.
And, and Jackson, just because of it being summertime and time off, if that is in there, I wouldn't think you would need to come back unless you, there was something you needed to expand on.
Okay, sounds good.
If all let, item three, the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four CTE four-year.
Good evening. Yes, so it's, it's that, that time of year where I gave you the highlights of the four-year plan. CTE has additional requirements on it that the, that basic ed doesn't have, and one of those is each program has to have a four-year plan. And then from that four-year plan from each program, we develop a district-wide four-year plan. And so it's just kind of highlights of what's going on in pro, in the programs. It's a four-year plan, but really it's the first two years that are most important because we report on what happened this year and what we intend to do next year, because three or four years out, things change. And so that's why it's called a plan, not a contract. Like, like, like you mentioned earlier, um, they, they often, often change. And so I'm gonna give you some of the highlights. I know you had a copy of the document, and it's fairly extensive. And I'll give you some of the highlights from each of the programs from this year. Um, agriculture was able to get a grant, and with that, they were able to purchase five new elders and update some lab equipment. Um, in the future, with the addition of Samantha Graff for our, for our, uh, new ag teacher, we look at the opportunities of adding some courses that we've wanted to add because she comes with the training, and she comes with the background, and she comes with the experience to, to increase our program offerings in agriculture. Business marketing started Mustang-style this year, and which they got reported, or someone reported, they got the gold standard for the bit for the store. And next year, they're going to expand into, um, school spirit-type things like the foam fingers and things like that. Um, they're going to get a display case and try to get more school spirit, and so that's the plan for, for the retail store. Family and Consumer Science, this year we updated, uh, the middle school kitchen. There was a lot of equipment that was outdated, broken, needed replaced, and so we did that. Um, and in fact, we just ordered some new prep tables, uh, for, for, for the kitchen. And then the teaching bridge was for sure that we had that, and we had, uh, two students that, um, well, we had twelve students in the program, but we had two students that, um, earned, or, or earned the ability to go to, uh, WSU's teaching, teaching program at university, at Tri-Cities. Um, Health Science, we hired Nate Conway to be our sports medicine teacher and athletic trainer. So that's gonna be a very beneficial thing. Uh, already, those classes are full with requests, and he just got, he just got back from his wedding, so we're gonna meet next week and get the curriculum planned and get everything in line for that. Uh, STEM, really, when you start a new program, you're, you're kind of like, how's this gonna go? Is this gonna be good? Um, we, we kind of thought STEM was going to, and we're in our second year, full second year of STEM, and that program has taken off. Um, in fact, the, we had to reduce sections because we only have so many sections that we can teach. And then next year, we're adding, um, another computer science course to the curriculum, which will be aligned with Walla Walla also. But yeah, it's really, and then we also got a grant for, for the STEM program through Project Lead the Way, and that allows us to update our cables to be more workable for the projects. It allowed, uh, us to recoup some of the cost of implementing the program. Then, let's hear what else. Uh, we increased our dual-credit offerings. Again, we added accounting, quicken, engineering design, and computer engineering and computer science, and then next year, we're gonna be offering college and a high school for engineering design, robotics, and personal finance. Any questions on the plan?
Great. Any questions from? Board?
Nope.
I love hearing that your STEM program is taking off and it's growing.
Yeah, and we're looking at the middle school. It, it's strictly robotics, and I've been working with Caseon and Ryan. It's like, maybe we should diversify that a little bit and get some of the engineering and some of the coding in earlier down there to, to expand offerings there also.
Anything from Alexander or Ken?
Alex is, is in like every program.
Is that right? What's your favorite?
My favorite CTE class I've taken, uh, that would be the, uh, CAD class that I had with Mr. Smith.
Yeah, in fact, the other day, I asked, I asked Alex, do you have any basic ed classes?
Well, I'm glad you're programming you, and you mean them all. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four CTE four-year plan.
There are second.
Second.
All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Number four, purchase of a CTE suburban.
Yes, that's me again.
Yes, it is.
So I've been working with Elise and, and Amy. Uh, we have, we have a soundbite in this CTE program, and so we want to purchase. And so we want to purchase our own suburban to to help with with transportation, sometimes we take two suburbans somewhere. But one has to hurry up and get back, so we'd like to have our own suburban that will be used by all departments to transport students to different events. Field trips, competitions, as well as can be used by teachers to travel to conferences.
Are there any questions?
Do you want to explain just how this works? Oh, sorry, Jason.
No, go ahead, I'm listening.
We want to talk about the money, let's just be real open about that and how that works and.
Okay, so CTE is self-funded. We're we're, we we generate our own money based on our enrollment. And night, the district gets to take five percent of that in what's called indirectly, just like take five percent and and do whatever they do. And then along with our funding, we also contribute to um office staff, we continue contribute to counselors. We contribute a a portion to many other things throughout the school and then. Then, of course, we pay for all salaries in the CTE department, myself, all the teachers. Uh, we pay for all of our curriculum, all of our equipment that we don't get with grants and we self-manage our money. And so this year, we have funds that would allow us to to uh buy the suburban. And so CTE, when I say is totally self-funded, we take, we have never taken any money from the school district. In fact, we have contrib- we contribute to the district.
And that's why vehicles are often done at the end of the year, right when that fiscal. Part is done and we're sure everything's secure, we know exactly where we're gonna be.
Cause you're using your recovery money, correct?
Yes.
What does that mean exactly?
So recovery money is if we don't spend it, it goes back. Yeah, yeah, and so along with this, we still, we we'll still have a carryover for next year.
But you can only carry over so much, so. There's a tool in OSPI that he uses and he'll go in and and put in his expenditures in there. And it'll populate what his carryover is and what his recovery is.
And I probably use it too much.
But you're on topic, so it's great.
Do you have additional recovery money beyond this vehicle?
Yes, we'll have a care, we'll have carryover, oh no, um. The recovery will be spent. Beyond, yeah, there there's additional funds beyond this vehicle that'll that'll be used or additional items that'll be purchased with the recovery money. And we'll probably get a little bit into our carryover.
We don't want to give one dollar back. We'll even buy a box of pens if we have.
I question or comment with, it looks like the sale is gonna go through Spec and Sunnyside. Versus Spec and Prosser.
Yes.
Is it possible to have it go through Spec and Prosser because the sales tax goes to wherever city the sale occurs? And it would be nice to have that sales tax stay in Prosser as opposed to going to.
Um, that that would be an Amy question.
That would be an Amy question, but we need to ask Amy about that one.
Yeah, I think that's that's where she got the quote from and. So I'm not sure. They're the ones that have the suburban.
They may have to dealer trade it to Spec of Prosser so that we can buy it from Spec of Prosser.
Actually made out to Spec of Prosser.
Oh, then that's.
The P O was generated yesterday or the day before.
So that's the quote?
Okay. Then perfect, thank you.
But we will double check.
Is there a motion?
Hold on, I had a question.
Oh, sorry, I apologize, Jason, go on.
Hey, uh, just out of curiosity, is the the price for the suburban, is that part of the state bid for vehicles? Or is it just a? You know, basic purchase direct from a dealership?
So there wasn't, uh, Amy didn't have, said that there wasn't any available through the state. And so then she had to go to a dealer. Yeah, she had three quotes. And spec actually came down from their original quote.
Okay, thank you. Can I move to approve the purchase of the suburban?
There are second.
I would second it.
You all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
All right, item five, Eastern Washington University College and the High School for twenty-four twenty-five.
This is a continuation of contracts that we've had with Eastern, we have to fill one, do one each year. Um, I did happen to see Deanna today and just double check to make sure there was no changes in this. Um, this is our same continuing contract, it's, we just have to sign them each year.
And will we have someone taking the speaker's place who we just? Any question?
I was curious if we're gonna add any more classes, because there really is only a few classes listed.
So we have lots of schools. So we have Eastern and we have Central and we have University of Washington. WSU, so all of them, yes, and that is based on their acceptance programs. Um, what they offer in college and the high school, because they have to support it also, and so. Those are all college-based transcripts. So just because you only see those classes with Eastern, that's only what Eastern offers, not what all of our college and the high school offers.
Yeah, for example, the CTE ones are all through CW.
Does Eastern offer more than this and we just don't have the?
I'm gonna have to take, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to table that to Deanna and really ask that question and we can make notes of it to ask Deanna, they do. But I'll give you an example that I ran into with Central Washington University and history, I'm just gonna give you an example. Each department inside its own university has their program requirements. I'll give you an example of history at Central and they're not in this discussion, but. Central Washington University will not accept even a masters. In teaching history, you have to have a masters or a doctorate in history. So they want to make sure that you are a history major, not a teaching history major. So we could never get CWU to accept our history. That makes sense? So sometimes each of the programs inside them, so English at CWU. Doesn't care, if you have a a teaching, a masters in teaching uh English education, they'll accept you. You don't have to have a masters in English. Cause they're very different types of masters. And so that's an example, so my answer to you though is, I don't know which programs at Eastern. Have things that we can participate in and ones we can't, based on who's on staff at the time. How close is that?
Yeah, that's that's close and then sometimes. On the different college programs, they were too full, we can't do anymore people, so we're not taking anyone. Eastern Science is notorious for not taking anyone, even though they offer it, they haven't taken anyone on in recent.
Because let's just say the the staffing for managing the college and the high school. Um, is different, so you have to go to their training, you ha- they monitor your coursework, they come and visit your school. They monitor your grading practices, so if they don't have the capacity to add anyone into those departments that are. Into those programs, then they would also say no, even if you had a doctorate.
In in my previous district, we had a doctor, a a teacher that had his doctorate in chemistry. And he he's, in his own words, I said, why do you want to teach? You've got, you can, you have research, he goes, eh, research isn't that sexy? Teaching's fun. He he's a, he's a character, but um, so he has his, had his doctor in in chemistry, Eastern wouldn't take him. They said, no, no, we're not taking him. He couldn't teach chemistry.
So I don't know if there are other classes that Eastern could offer us or if this is all Eastern has for us, and I would have to email you back.
I I would guess that there's more that's just all that we qualified.
Is it a standard then for any college in the classroom that the masters and something?
Uh, Central and other program areas has loosened up. They'll like, they'll they'll take a certain amount of experience within that subject here, if you don't have a masters.
And it's a little different in things like English and history than it may be in a CTE program because they know that CTE program. Instructors often have practical experience versus some of the others wish to have a research-based or. Depth of knowledge, deeper depth of knowledge. So it's kind of a roundabout way to say I truly don't know the answer for Eastern, but those are some examples of different colleges and high school programs.
Well, as we have added all of these patchwork college and the high school programs. I think it was Yashini who said something about.
The transcripts are.
Transcript costs.
So we've taken on those transcript costs, so they're not a cost to the student. Um, but there is legislative actions that we can talk about as we get closer to legis- legislative season. About making a universal college in the high school type transcript. So like if you think about all your con- like mine, I have a transcript from. Where I graduated from high school and then I have my Central transcript and then I have my WGU transcript and then they all have to be mailed into somewhere. So they're talking about coming up with a college in the high school. Way that that goes on your Washington State High School transcript, I guess is the easiest way to say that. And then you would have a college transcript as well.
I think it's important that students are getting the information that, you know, whether. You're running start school or you're college in the classroom, that, you know, you're going to have to get a transcript for all those places and it's on you to make sure. When you enroll in your next educational institution that you are making sure that you apply and get those credits approved and that. When I talk to to parents out in the world, that, you know, that, the message seems to be that not everybody is getting that information or it's kind of like hit and miss, but.
And I think as we do this longer, our teachers, our counselors and our messing. Period teachers, right, are getting wiser about how that process looks. It's in handbooks and it's the counselor doing it, but it's kind of like if you're the first child in a household to go to college versus the third child to go to college. There's a lot more knowledge going on, so it does take a while for us to know how to. Turn, I'm looking at the audience, when, how to message it, um, I, you'll hear me talk a lot about vocabulary. When we say transcript, a parent thinks high school transcript, um, when we say a college transcript, it. Does not mean necessarily the same thing, also your level of technology use and understanding. Because all transcripts are ordered online anymore, you don't call up and pay your ten dollars in the off- finance office and get your transcript. There's um. Have you guys filled it went out lately, there's the. Where you order your transcripts from a clearinghouse, uh. Trans- transcript clearinghouse now, so you all, if I want my transcripts, I call. And I don't, it's not called transcript clearinghouse, but it's basically that and they, and I pay them and they get all of my college transcripts for me. So I don't have to do an email to Central and an email to WGU, right? I can just do it to transcript clearinghouse and that's not what it's called, but that's close to what it is.
Is that available to students?
Yep, anybody who has a college transcript, yep. Anybody who has a college transcript. And then the example would be if you have a private smaller school, they may not use the transcript clearinghouse. But any of your state colleges that we're using for college and the high school would use the transcript clearinghouse. You want to Google that and see if you can, somebody can tell you something.
A friend of mine just used it.
Oh.
And she was just telling me about, yeah, Oscar.
Yeah, or yeah, I think it's called, it's it's called trans, it's like transcope clearinghouse, but it's something like that, so. No, it's national. Yeah, so it's a national state college clearinghouse for transcripts.
There's national student clearinghouse.
I was pretty close, but so it is, so then like any of the bigger colleges, private colleges, I don't know how many of the private colleges are in there. But they're not our college and the high school colleges either.
Any other discussion?
Can I please make a personal comment about our class? So for the past two years, I've been, uh, I've taken Miss Rada's uh. Physical conditioning uh class, which is a uh. College and high school uh credit class. And for both times, apparently she's been having troubles with getting the students registered into the credit things. And because of that, I have not been able to receive my credits for taking that class for those two uh or. For taking that class those two times.
Selena, will you make note of that, please, so I can follow up with Mr. Bailey and Mrs. Rada?
Um, after the first time I talked to my counselor and had her check if it was um on like. The schools like they do recognize that it was and. She checked and it was and yeah.
Okay, well, if you've taken them, you'll get the credits, there's always a solution.
Yeah, um, I did talk to my counselor and she said that when I took it my sophomore year and when I was going into my junior year, no. When I took it, no, I talked to Rada after the second try. And she said, oh, because it's now the third try, I can't put it in or something.
Okay, we'll figure, we'll get to the bottom of that.
Yeah.
Thank you for making that a two.
Yes, because if you don't bring it up, I don't know about it.
Yeah, so what is, that makes me think, what is the process for like making sure the students get the credit through the appropriate school?
They should get an email, just like I would if I was in college and completed the class and they should be able to go into their Central or. I see heads nodding, you should be able to go into Central or you should be able to go into Eastern, you have a student ID, you should be able to see your transcript at any time.
And she went through procurement.
And is that what you experienced, Cam, I see you nodding your head?
So I took nearship in PGA Academy this year. And that's what we had, we got a school email from Eastern, we got.
Yeah, and I, when I took physical conditioning, we never went through to like a college website and like signed up to any classes or. Anything, we just did the class and.
Okay, I'll look into that.
And as well, I did uh make sure constantly throughout this year to ask her about that and she just kept on saying that there was a problem.
Okay. I'll work into it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess my question has more to do with like, who's the person who initiates it with the university? Like the student gets an email or does the teacher send?
Starts with the roster, yes, that's correct. And that's part of their training, like right now we're doing college and the high school training in the summer. And they get that training and they, how to process that, they get their login, upload of rosters, those kinds of things. Yeah, and each university is a little different, so I think that's the other piece. Once a teacher learns one system's way, they want to stay with that college, so they're not doing logging into Central and doing it one way and logging into Eastern and doing the difference.
Right, if there's not any further questions or if there are. Discussion, is there a motion?
Um, I move to approve EWU College in the High School for twenty-four twenty-five.
Is there a second?
I'd second it.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Number six, is it?
Wenaha?
Wenaha Group Agreement for Consulting Services.
So we had done the resolutions to go out for construction management, right, this is the contract with Wenaha. Um, who is our project manager. Um, pretty straightforward, um, they're going to, because we're, these are small individual projects, they're going to contract by the hour. Um, different fees based on different person who's doing the work. Um, for example, we have a couple. Interns that are working for them from different colleges, right, so we get a very discounted price um for that, so this is that contract agreement.
And this is coming from levy?
Yes, this is our capital levy, yes, thank you.
Are there any questions?
No question.
Thank you. All right, hearing none, is there a motion? Is there a second? Thank you, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. And I forgot to ask our student, you have thoughts on the consulting agreement before we vote it? Well, next time. Number seven, vouchers and payroll. Is there any questions concerning the vouchers or payroll?
Figure out which number it was. Elise probably knows off the top of her head and I just was curious what this. Gas for the oven thing was, it's so expensive, like forty-eight thousand dollars. It's like gas.
It is the gas oven.
The gas oven? The grant.
The grant.
That's, it's not the gas for the oven, it's a gas oven.
So food services got a grant for two ovens. She got a grant for two ovens and so we purchased one before and we just purchased another one. Is it the oven at River View?
Yes.
It's a very special oven, very special oven, yep.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and it's fully covered.
Wow.
Mm-hmm.
I think, and I think it said, um, wow, yeah, the way it was written, it was like, gas rod.
Or something.
Gas roll in oven.
Yeah, gas roll.
A roll in that, so that is.
The way it rolls in. Yeah.
Yeah.
I could see where that might be a little funny.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Frank or Jason, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Uh, no, I moved to approve vouchers and payroll.
Is there a second?
I'd second it.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing then, motion carries. Going to consent items. We have certificated personnel, classified personnel, approval amendments and volunteer coaches. We have a motion.
I would make.
I moved to approve second.
I've never had so many motions. All right.
Go ahead.
Someone noted that. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Hearing then, consent items have been approved. Reports, Elise, you are first.
Um, okay. So we have April's financials, um, which look really great. Um, as you can see, our revenues are up, um, about two million dollars and our expenditures are down. Um, we did get a huge tax payment this, uh, in April and then we also got our levy assistance in April as well. Um, so our fund balance is looking a lot better than it was in March.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing then, we'll go to superintendent's report.
Um, I passed it out, um, I'll send it out. Frank and Jason and Brian and everybody, so you've got just for your records. I'll be as quick as I can here, volunteering my first category. Oh, I attended the music concerts, the third grade welcome night, Rotary luncheon top ten. We had a year ended admin get together at De- Deanna's home, the M E P graduation party and a successful hot graduation. Um, it, and it was hot, but I do want people to understand ten o'clock in the morning is, is. The direct sun is, is a tough, but we were blessed. Because if, if you had talked to the people from Dorian's and a few others, there's a couple graduations at two and three o'clock at. Um, big school stadiums and so it's tough. Um, communication, the pulse of Prosser is done for the year. We will start back up in August. Uh, capital levy information is going, um, out next week on our website and some social media posts, bringing people up to speed. Um, so that's really exciting. Student board members, we had our first board meet, uh, student rep meeting Monday, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, um, and we just got to go, we're gonna have a monthly meeting, um, the. Let me say it right, the second Tuesday of each month after school starts. August is kind of in a funky place because of some things that are going on, but we're gonna meet then. Uh, legal, I'm happy to report, we have no legal outstanding cases or situations that I'm working with the attorney on. We are moving forward with O P H S, um, and I know I was joking earlier, but I want everybody to understand if you've ever moved. You don't want visitors at your house until the boxes are put away and the things are done. But I do want to bring you up to speed, the outside painting on the south. Side of that building and it's kind of the southeast side, but that ramp where the senior parking lot is, that area will be painted. In the, uh, if it's yellow, it'll be painted, that's what we're calling it. Um, the Boys and Girls Club are gonna do a side, everybody else is gonna participate, we're gonna do that. We met with fast signs today about district signage, um, in different locations and making sure community knows. Um, we're gonna be taking out the gravel and putting in some plants and really trying to up the front there. Um, Boys and Girls Club, if you had driven through the senior parking lot, it had its fence way out. They're just about done with their main dirt work and gravel, taking out the parking lot, so the fences are going back. We'll wash that parking lot and have some striping done, it'll, it'll look nice, but. No one can come and visit until mid-July unless you have to have something really important because you don't want to see my house until it looks good. Um, we have started having weekly capital levy meetings with Architects West, Wenaha, Andy and I. I'm happy to report that the tennis courts have gone out to bid. The bids were posted in the Record Bulletin, which is our paper of record. The Yakima Herald, the Tri-Cities Herald and the D J C, which is the Daily Journal of Commerce. We also made personal phone calls to local construction companies to make sure that they knew that it was there. Um, happy to say we're preparing, um, the Housal Vestibule and the A D A ramp, they should go out next week. They may end up being small enough projects that we can do them through what's called the Small Works roster. Because those projects should be under three hundred thousand and we won't have to go through that huge full. Um, bid process, so that's super exciting, uh, for expediting the process. Um, let's see. Then we, next down in the next week, we'll be working on bringing in the A D A restrooms at the high school. Um. I just drew a total blank, what else is on that list? Anyhow, so each one, each week when we meet, we're gonna be adding one piece to get out. Um, I do want everybody who's listening, um, if you've had to buy any windows. Um, window and glass is, um, in kind of short supply still. Um, and so the vestibule at the high school is still slated to be ready before the first day of school. But we did get some warning that the storefront type inside walls that we will be using, you know how you have all glass coming into this vestibule? Um, we, I should be able to give you some more concrete information at our next meeting about the vestibule and the glass part of it. Um, leadership, we're planning for twenty-four, twenty-five, start of school activities, we're building a calendar, all those kinds of things. The Teachers Association ratified the contract today. I do want to let you know, we'll bring it to the board for approval, right? Because it's not effective until you approve it. But, um, as you know, I'm very picky on. What the contract looks like now and then the red line, so you can see it. And because you, um, trade contracts about five or six times back and forth, that gets very messy. So we have to make sure we have the original and then just what the contract changes are. So we're hoping to have it to you. Um, the first meeting in July. Because it just takes time to make sure it's accurate and I don't want to present something that's not accurate. Um, I do want everybody to know, according to the old timers, you know, so I put that in quotes, this is the earliest that's been done ever now. Or at least everybody that was in the room. So those, some of the people in the room have worked for us for thirty years and we're happy to say. That we ra- they ratified a three-year contract that already has salary negotiated. And it's done in June and everybody got to go home and have a great summer break. Fiscal, we are gonna wait on our budget final presentation until the second July board meeting. Because we want to make sure we have all the information from O S P I and right now it's doing this. Um, not meaning like major changes, but they tweak something or they do something and we don't want to have to have a budget agenda. So we'll present and then it has to have be for public review for so many days or weeks and then we'll do our resolution. And the district will be closed on the nineteenth and observance of Juneteenth. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right. Board report. Jason or Frank, would you like to go first?
Um, I don't really have anything other than welcome aboard student reps. Uh, thank you for getting involved.
Jason. We might come back to him, Michelle, if you have to report.
Not really, I just, um, thought graduation was really great. It was my first time shaking all those hands and. Thought as it might have been, um, it was tolerable, it went quick, so I appreciated that it was, like, an hour and we were out of the sun. Um, but anyway, I thought it was, I thought it was really beautiful. Great speeches.
Oh, Jason, would you like to give a report?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I couldn't get off mute fast enough, but, uh. Uh, no, just apologize, couldn't be there. Uh, Lisa, Michelle, thanks for holding the fort down and welcome to the new student board reps.
I'll tie it, my items quickly, it's just a lot of, what's, um, I think since we've been here last, there was the band concert, which was wonderful. I appreciate they started with the Star Spangled Banner and did it spectacular, had everybody stand for that, it's a wonderful performance. I keep saying band, but the choir also did a really lovely job and we're building our choir program back. So Winnie the Pooh performances, I think we're sold out, every single one of them and the parents were so proud to have an opportunity to see their kids be. Adorable on the stage and I really appreciate that you worked hard to have a partnership with our community theater and. Make sure that we have arts for, a performance for every grade level. I, that means so much to those little kids. Scholarship night, if no one's ever attended scholarship night, it's amazing, um. And seeing our kids that work so hard and culmination of all their work through the years and the community members that are there that. Lots of storytelling time, um, and hear the stories of people that, you know, gave, you know, their life's work to these scholarship funds and. The stewardship that goes into taking care of that investment and giving it out to students so carefully. Um, graduation, uh, when it end that, um. Uh, t- tonight in Newtown, Connecticut, was the graduation for the Sandy Hook students that had twenty students missing.
Oh.
Because they were murdered in their classroom in twenty-fourteen. Everybody could have a moment in their heart, think about those families and what's missing from their graduation. And how I think all of us work so hard to make sure that our students. Are safe every minute of the day in the community and at our schools and I appreciate everybody that works so hard to make sure that they're safe. On the bus, walking to school, in the building. Our next meeting, we'll have a board meeting in this room, June eighteenth at six.
Seventeen, we ended.
Gosh, that's correct, Monday. It's Monday, the seventeenth at six P M. Also later that week on June twentieth at six P M, at the high school will be the dedication. Um, for the memorial for Marine Sergeant Marvin. And that is open to the. And that's it, we're adjourned.